Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting, February 27. Thank you for your patience in this fairly quick reschedule. I think we have some minutes we can go through quickly. Are there any changes or corrections on these that are from January 28? All right, any further changes?
I have none.
We're looking for motion to approve these. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're going to do the, we have two surety release and peer review release. We'll do this at the end. We also have an executive session. We're going to go through the A and R, but first, all three of the SPs for tonight are looking for continuances, so I think just in the interest of time, we'll just go through those quickly and continue them one by one. And Paul can let us know exactly the reasons. So, Cumberland Farms says two, it's SP 486 and SP 491. They're requesting to continue to March 10.
Yes, and that was due to just, they just received, we just received this afternoon, the stormwater peer review, so that's been forwarded.
They did get it?
We did. I haven't looked at it, but I forwarded that to the applicant.
So with those, I think we'll need two motions to continue.
Move to continue special permit 486 to March 10.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, and we need one for SP 491.
Move to continue special permit 491 to March 10.
I'll second again.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. We also have Waiting River Estates, SP 490. They're also requesting a continuance to March 10.
Right. I'm sorry.
They are currently undertaking both their traffic study that was requested by the peer review, and they're doing their modeling as well for stormwater.
Move to continue special permit 490 to March 10.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, and as I said, the executive session will do at the end. We have an A and R endorsement for 133 South Worcester Street. Do we have the applicant here?
Would you like me to just?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for taking this out of order. And just for the record, my name is Matthew Costa. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Gay and Gay, C.C., in Ton for the applicant of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Fall River. So this is an A and R application to divide the parcel of land that the St. Mary's Parish Rectory is on at 133 South Worcester Street. There's two lots that's shown on the plan, Lot 1 and Lot 2. Both lots have more than 150 feet of frontage on South Worcester Street. Lot 1 has 188 and 1/2 feet of frontage, and Lot 2 has 165 feet, 165 and 1/2 feet of frontage. So because both lots have at least the required frontage on a public way, it's not a subdivision into the subdivision control lot, so we're asking for the A and R endorsement from the board. And I'll also mention that this plan does require variances as well, and so there's actually presently a hearing that's already been opened on this with the zoning board of appeals. So in order to go forward with this, the ZBA will need to grant variances for a lot area. That's the only dimensional issue that needs zoning variances, but as far as this board goes, it's not a subdivision, and so we're asking for that endorsement. For those of you who are familiar with the property, the side where Lot 2 is is basically formerly the parking lot, which I've heard mentioned, and so it's kind of a natural cutoff where one side is the rectory yard and the other side is kind of the parking lot area. And the parish's plan is if this is approved, then they would sell these lots and build a new rectory on the land where the church is now. So that's already a tax-exempt parcel, so they would add the rectory building to that, and then these two lots would be sold, and the proceeds would be used to offset the cost of the new rectory and to help the parish. So that's basically in a nutshell.
All right, do we have any questions from the board?
Just from, there's an existing fence between the four of these two lots, and is that where the line is? What, look at the lots, or is that?
It's right along the area, but I don't know if the lines are exactly on the fence, but that's basically cut off.
You sure?
Right, the existing house is on Lot 1. And so we, and it shows the setbacks, so that the boundary is located in such a way that it meets the setbacks, so.
Do you know if you don't have the outside?
That's correct. This is in our 4 district.
We're talking about the area. Yeah, okay. You did not miss the executive session.
Nothing, nothing, it's basically a vacant area. There's a fence that runs along it, that's it.
Any further questions?
What's the impact of our decision in terms of the existing structure? Do you want to do that? Would that be a non-conformity once we do that?
Well, we're not approving it, but.
I guess what you're saying, Warren, is, I guess, because it speaks to what you put in your email, maybe.
Yes, I addressed that.
By endorsing the plan, we essentially mean, does that mean that the existing, the lot with the existing house on it becomes essentially an existing non-conformity use?
No. First of all, the use is allowed, so it would be a structure, a non-conforming structure. It does not become non-conforming until they sell one of the lots. So the endorsement of the A and R plan does not, it creates a, it creates two non-conforming lots, but the non-conformity does not become alive until a lot is sold. There was a case in 2018 on Binyer that determined that it's the controlling case, it's an SGC case. So if they do not, it's, I don't know what they're going to do, but I'm assuming if they don't get the variance, they will not report the A and R plan, and therefore, the house stays as it is. If they get the variance, then it doesn't, it becomes non-conforming with the blessing of a variance.
What about the second lot? Are they looking for variance in the second?
Yeah, they're looking for variances on it.
Yeah.
And I did, I have issued an opinion to the zoning board also on the variance, exactly, on the variance, and it's my opinion that they don't meet the, they don't meet the standards for variance.
Because they created their own hardship.
Exactly. Well, that and other things, yeah.
Unless it's a hardship.
Yeah, exactly. But there's also no shape-size topography. There's really nothing that would allow the zoning board to issue a variance, so.
Is there a statement here that the, by approving it?
There is. So I did check that, Warren, and actually, I actually recommend that it always be on, and actually, this already had it on. It says the above endorsement is not a determination as to conformance with zoning and other local regulations. And the building commissioner is aware of this, so if they came in or something, we would know.
And it is true that without the variance, the division wouldn't actually occur. The plan wouldn't be recorded, we wouldn't be able to sell several lots.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Okay. So I think, we need a motion to endorse this.
Endorse the A and R for 133.
133 South.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so we'll get these copies signed.
Can I actually use your?
Yeah. Kind of rotate them around.
I was supposed to second one.
And then, yeah, you all have.
Never do the first.
Joe talked about that already.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you guys sign that one and that other paper copy is what I'll, yeah.
Paul, you just have to nudge us a little bit.
It's been one of those days.
Long one, yeah. It's one of those.
Yeah.
I had the tees.
All right, who signed under the zoning board of appeals?
Oh, God, did we?
Who's got it written?
Did we sign under the right place?
You did.
Yes, guys.
No, over here.
That's right, Kevin started us off at the bit. We only need one copy.
No, you want a, with planning board. Did you just sign?
We only keep one of the houses.
Should they re-sign it up here just to be, they should be signing it up here.
The zoning board of appeals doesn't sign plans.
Right, that should be.
I'm going to have them just sign up here anyway.
Yeah. No, yeah, sign up there.
Did he even sign up next to the plan?
No, they do not, no.
Okay, there's Joe and Warren here, just sign under the.
Who signed the Mylar on the bottom?
I signed both spots.
Okay, you got to sign under the planning board.
I think he said he did.
Oh, both, okay, and Warren did too.
Is that all of them, or?
No, they get.
No, we got to go over there.
Who else?
Now you're upside down. It's very misleading to see.
That's their copies, right?
He might, yeah.
I'm sorry?
The applicant, Mylar.
Yeah, more than like.
He signed it where the board of appeals signs it, so that would be an administrative thing.
Okay.
You could have each member come in whenever they can.
Okay.
Did you catch that?
It depends on if, yeah, it depends on if the registrar will take it.
This one's completed.
Yeah.
If it is, let us know, we'll get it signed.
Yeah, just get it to me and we'll email.
Okay.
Would it be a new, a new lot?
It would be, they would just submit a new Mylar, and you would just have to re-sign it. It's a, it's a strander's error.
Right, okay.
Not a big deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So we have a few minutes before that room is available, so do you want to do the surety release and the peer review release?
Kevin, did you sign this one?
Yes.
Okay, all right. He's got the Mylar.
Okay, so with the surety release, this was for an old subdivision approved back in the 90s, and it's called Burt Farm, and it's on Fuller Drive, and the account holder is Pallilio Norton Trust, so it's that project south of the Cranberry Boggs, but it's Fuller Drive. So there was funding set aside as part of the surety back then for the construction of the roadway, but there was about $5,000 held back. This goes back many years, I think to 2007, but, so Mr. Pallilio has asked us to release the funds. Keith Silver, our highway superintendent, went out and confirmed work was complete pursuant to it, so we feel that that authorizes it. In addition, there was, there were a few, there was a few hundred dollars left in a peer review account at that time as well. I don't know the last time that peer review was, in 2007, it was basically the same amount, so we're trying to release funds when projects are essentially complete. As far as we're concerned, Fuller Drive is now complete, so we're just asking you to authorize me to send a letter to the treasurer, releasing the funds for the surety and for the peer review. We're not putting the dollar amount in, the treasurer just said, just recommend releasing the remaining cash surety, but I do have some dollar amounts if you're interested in knowing.
Is the surety $5,000?
Thereabout.
Does it reflect the interest for 13 years?
It has, it has been collecting interest, and if it's like my bank, it's not much.
So $5,002?
They just completed construction of the last two policies and the last one.
Right, and that, and that's.
That's probably why they didn't ask for it earlier. They just, both were done last year, so.
The last statement I have is, I don't have my glasses, but it looks like 5354, $5,354.12.
I don't know where they invested that.
We, the money, the treasurer then puts it in a, in an account, a low-interest-bearing account, so any sureties that we collect goes through that, so. And then for the peer review.
So that's an estimate, a rough estimate, you know?
Right. Well, it's a little bit more than that, but.
The question, are the owners of the subdivision, are they notified of this request for a release? Do they have to do to confirm that there's no issues?
I don't know that there's a requirement, there's no requirement to do that.
There's no requirement, we just want to be aware of it.
You've got someone in the audience who may want to weigh in.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Just your name and address.
Good evening, cannot fly Fuller Drive. In conjunction with the release of surety bond, I'm not sure if everyone on the planning board realizes that there is no fire hydrants on Fuller Drive. They're there, but they've never been properly tested, so therefore, all those funds we use to properly test the fire hydrants of Fuller Drive can have working fire hydrants, because if there was any fire, we'd just lost a lot of Fuller Drive.
Well, the funds were set up specifically for the road construction, not aware that it was set aside for the hydrants.
But that would have, I assume, I don't remember the construction of Fuller Drive, but if Fuller Drive was constructed from scratch, then that would have included fire hydrants.
Correct.
In other words, if there's nothing there, the developer would have been required to put in hydrants. I mean, I don't know if it would have tested or not.
Yeah, I think it's a really good point.
There's one hydrant in the ground.
I think it's, hold on one second, just one second. I think, I think it's a good idea to possibly table this until we can figure that out, if that's part of it. So if there's anyone else that would like to speak before we do.
I was just going to say, there's one that's buried in the ground, top that's just sticking out across the street from our house, but it's not hooked up to anything, so there's one that's placed in the ground, but it's not connected, and that's the only one that there is, as far as I know.
You said it's across from your house?
Across from our house, it's on the Sharetz property.
So I guess there's two questions here. One is checking the fire department's status and the hydrant, and two is reviewing the terms of the surety to find if this is actually something that would alter the grounds.
I can pull something up quickly on that, but we can certainly check with, with fire on the status.
And you should be the plan.
I'd rather table it before, I don't want to rush through.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They should be recorded.
Are they also required to file an ASB?
More than likely, yeah. I don't see why not, I mean, that's, it was 2007, but I don't.
It was a little bit longer than that.
I would think that would be one of the checklist, I mean, to test the fire hydrants.
They would have had to file an ASB to get the first one released.
Right.
So.
And they've never, yeah, yeah, thank you for bringing.
When we purchased our house on Fuller Drive, we were always told that once that development is completed, we would have working fire hydrants.
So you've been told specifically that they're not working?
Yeah, it's just, it's a, it's one, but it's not hooked up to the, up to.
How do you, how do you know that it's not hooked up? I'm just, I just want to make sure we get all the information.
How do we know?
How do we know? The water commissioner.
Okay. Okay, have you spoken?
Everything's there, it's just never been tested.
Have you spoken to the fire department at all about it?
No. Well, yeah, they know.
So they, okay.
Yeah, and there's been meetings where it's been brought up.
They painted the fire hydrant block.
When you talk about, one's buried, you said one's there, which is not tested.
There's only one, and it's buried, it's on Sharetz property.
There's one across the, across the.
Why would, why would fire sign off on that?
Of Fuller Drive, it's on the corner of.
The highway's.
And Fuller, but there, up to town water.
So we may not know.
They talked about the same one, you said it's buried.
Let's check with Keenan.
They should be identified on the plan somewhere, right?
So there's only one fire hydrant?
One.
There was one at the beginning of the street, there was one halfway down.
How many did the developer put in?
One.
One, just one?
Just one halfway down.
And how do you know it's never been tested?
Oh, it's not connected to anything, it's just in the ground, but not connected.
And that's what the water department said.
We're told that, when we bought our house in 2006, that it's never been, it's like, just the top of it's sticking out of the ground, and it's just never been hooked up.
So, yeah, that's, we should definitely, we'll see, I'll check with fire on that.
Definitely talk to Keith and fire and find out.
You can ask Pallilio, too.
Well, we'll check with the fire department and see what the status of that is. I mean, looking at my material, it was specifically for road improvements, but we could certainly.
Whether fire hydrants would follow your road, getting.
Sure. So let's just confirm that before we move on any of this.
Okay.
Well, that's really.
I think you're under your subdivision control, you would be able to acquire them.
Well, I would think the final occupancy.
It's up to the per day.
I, I'm very surprised that.
That's strange.
Is it a public, is it a public road?
It is.
And it's always been a public road since it?
No, it wasn't initially, but after they sold a certain number of homes on the street, turned over.
Did it, did town meeting accept it?
I believe so. The town started following the.
Town meeting, town meeting can't accept it without, without an ASB at town meeting.
What?
All right, something's missing somewhere, we need to find it before, I think we're, I'm comfortable.
Check those plans.
A lot of this doesn't make sense.
Thank you, thank you guys for bringing that up to us.
Move to table the release.
So if you find out when town meeting accepted it, that file should have the ASB, it should have everything.
So we can move to table both the surety and peer review releases until, do you think the March 10 meeting would make sense?
We'll find it.
Until the, until the March 10 meeting?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you, guys.
Going to sneak down and check the room downstairs?
Yeah.
They may not be here for that.
Yeah, we're going to.
Maybe you could just explain the process of going into executive sessions, or come back or whatever.
All right, so the reason we went through all of these items first is we have an executive session, we don't want to keep people hanging around waiting for us, so we're just checking if the room's ready, and we're going to move into an executive session to discuss litigation regarding Nexon Energy and Cogliano et al. versus the town and the planning board.
Do you come back here to close the meeting?
No, if you, if you make the motion that you're not going to return to open session, you do not have to.
We don't have any bills right, so we have one.
Done with your business, then I would recommend that.
All right, so let's do, we have a, we have a bill, and you can write, this is the stormwater peer review from Chesapeake for Cumberland Farms for $2,994.34. And it was received today?
No, that's for previous work.
That's the previous one?
Yeah.
So the room downstairs is empty and nobody's in there, but still have all of the voting included.
Yeah, it will.
Yeah, it will.
Yeah, tomorrow, and we can, we can meet in there.
You don't want to be on the news for your.
Yeah, I'm just going to pass this down.
I'll make sure you all stay on. You blame me.
So it's just our last piece of business, and then we'll vote on that, and we'll vote to, to close the regular meeting, right?
No, so did you guys print out the, all the stuff I gave you with the motions and everything? No, okay. I didn't even know what you're talking about, sorry. I gave, it was the last time you did executive session for this, please. Oh, I wasn't, I don't think I was here, I'm sorry. So, so you are going to entertain a motion to enter into executive session under GL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding three land court cases. Nexon Energy versus Fernandez, 19 miscellaneous 230, Cogliano versus Hornsby, 19 miscellaneous 564, Cogliano versus the town of Norton, 19 322. Votes may be taken, and the board will not return to open session. So I need that, I need someone to say so moved.
Wait, we have to approve this bill first.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the table, we're going to hold that for a second.
I will need to recuse myself from that executive session as well, so.
Okay.
If you vote before or after I do that?
Everybody get a chance to look at the invoice? Oh, it's still, it's okay.
No, now, because you're not going to vote to go into executive session. So it's good that you did it now.
I may have a conflict, I'll discuss this in open session. Two years ago, we owned, it's just when I owned a fairly large tract of land, two years ago, as approached by someone I didn't know, wanting to know if we'd be interested in having a solar farm on our property. I said, knock yourself out, go look around, and they had, he had at the time, an interested developer. In light of that, when the original zoning article to allow for the subject development, I abstained from participation, and as you recall, I did not present at the town meeting. Subsequent to that, the developer lost interest, and I thought, and still don't know whether it's ever going to happen, but since it fell through with that developer, although the original person who contacted me still is in contact with me, and that developer fell through, I thought it was over, and I participated in both the original hearing and the subsequent hearing. That original person who contacted me has been in, and I'm hearing it from him and someone else, but I've not spoken to Mike, but he has been in discussions with the town of Norton for a pilot. I've had no discussions with Mike or anyone else, other than this individual contacted me, so my point in raising this is I have the potential of a solar farm myself, and I've said this before, but the odds are, 50/50, 90, 90%, 10%, I don't know, but I want to put that out there in the event that anyone feels there's a conflict in light of this litigation.
Is the, is the potential developer Nexon Energy? Or anybody affiliated with Nexon Energy?
Not that I know of, and again, what my sense is, the person who originally contacted me is one of these folks, like a lot of developers, they go up and get permitting and then sell the subject property, or the subject permit. Back when this original zoning bio that came up, there was an actual developer interested in it, and they had provided us a potential contract, but I have nothing in writing, and I have no idea whether anything is going to materialize, it's become a little more serious, in that I have been told by both the agent, if you will, and former town official, that they have been in discussions with the town in order for a pilot. I don't know what the terms are, I don't really care until someone presents us personally with a proposal, but there's been nothing. So I want to put that out there, if there's a sense that that constitutes any type of conflict, I won't participate in the executive session.
I don't see a conflict because you're not, there's no, there's no financial gain for you with what you would be voting on?
Well, I mean, there is, and again, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, under, I forgot the name of the program, but the.
The SMART program.
SMART program in terms of credits, there are a limited number of credits, so one could argue that by me participating, either approving or denying, I'm enhancing the likelihood that therefore, or enhancing the likelihood by denying the. enhancing the likelihood by denying the subject permit so that I don't have competition for those credits or approving it, so.
Is your, does your property have Cranberry Boggs?
No.
Then I'm not sure it would be eligible for the smart program.
But there are, as I understand it, there are credits in terms of, not credits, but
There's the reggie credits for solar, but I mean, that would mean that I mean, they're, they're not as, as far as I know, and I don't get into the money side of all of this, but they're not as limited as the smart program, because the smart program is a brand-new program. But I think that if you, if you feel that, if you are not comfortable, there's, there's still five members. So you have, we have a quorum, or we have more than a quorum.
Again, it's not that I, you know it sounds corny, but I go to bed at night, whenever I've done it in a public sector, feeling comfortable with what I've done. So I, I don't feel I have a conflict, but by the same token, I want it out there. I was, I was upfront when the zoning file was first proposed, that there was this possibility. And right now, again, I couldn't buy lunch on what I've made off of this so far, and they never will be. But I want it out there. Do I feel I have a conflict? I do not, because even if I did have a conflict, I would do it. I feel my obligation to the planning board and the town Either the members of the board, or you advise that I sit it out.
You can also, you can also recuse yourself tonight and get an opinion from the state ethics commission. It's a free they have a lawyer of the day. I can get the number to Paul, and you can call them, and then you have it. And you have it anyway, so you have it for the future. They're very good. They're very responsive.
I've spoken to, spoke to them self. Again, I feel a bit foolish, because it's very nebulous, and I don't know that anything will ever happen, but
I appreciate you bringing it to us.
There's no town limitation relative to how many, how many solar farms are there? It's not something that's related to, if anything, it's state-related. And in that case, I don't see anything directed in terms of if they're only to afford it, they put it to town, that's something different. If there's, if that's controlled by the state, the state says, I don't know where, myself, I don't see a real
And I don't, again, I don't pretend to even begin to understand the economics of it, but it is my understanding that there are some type of there's some type of I'll call it quotas, but there's just so many solar firms that that either the utilities will grant credits for it. It's a bit of a competitive process, because, again, this individual has told me, we're trying to get in while there's still credits available. So that someone could make the argument, well, if he, and it's matter of record, I voted against the first one for, I felt it was valid reasons, voted for the second one for, I felt it was valid reasons. So I voted both ways on this thing, but obviously two different reasons. But it certainly wasn't because I was trying to knock out competition or enhance competition, so.
I don't see an issue. I mean, it's not tied to the applicant, this one, Nexton or anything, so. Like Amy said, it's your call. I'm perfectly fine with you staying on it.
Well, if since one of the complaints has got my name on it, that's still
I'm with you, buddy.
So I'll, you know, unless there's some probably reason that someone suggested I not, you know, probably disagree.
Thank you for putting it on the table and letting everybody know. I think it's since I've known you, all I've seen is great ethics, so I'm not concerned. Yes, we have to vote on the invoice.
I guess, I'm sorry, I have another question. Could you explain what, if there was a vote to be taken tonight, what that is?
Where, there's, anything that's gonna be taken is gonna be an executive session, so it's not for public.
At this time.
At this time, yes.
So as to her understanding of what these cases represent, and if we're gonna be asked to do something, but that would be in an executive session. We would notify her of what our intentions are, and then she'll communicate that. Whatever that may need to be, we'll
So we're looking to motion on the invoice. What was, do you still have a little bit?
Motion for the invoice.
I stole it. Second.
Oh.
Hold on. We're on Farm Stormwater, right?
Yes.
For
I don't, it's what just happened. Or instead of prove, I said
What was the total?
Okay.
It's
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine ninety-four. We have to
Twenty-nine ninety-four thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Okay. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Who motioned in second?
Orin did, and I seconded.
Okay. Okay, now back to that motion.
That Tim made, right?
On the table.
So first, I'm gonna recuse myself.
There's a motion, and then yes, Scott's gonna recuse himself.
Okay.
So it recuses.
I have a motion.
Thank you, Scott.
Orin, Julie second.
No, that was the bills. That was the bill. Now this, Orin motioned, he recused himself?
Yep.
Himself, okay.
Yep, so Orin made the motion. Scott recuses himself.
Second.
Kevin second.
Kevin seconds.
Okay, any further discussion? And you said the room's ready, right?
It was empty in my room.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
I don't think we want to make the motion that they will conclude the meeting.
Yeah, that was
I said Amy, I said we're going back to our session.
That was your motion.
All right.
Appropriate advice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
It's the roll call.
Roll call, yeah.
Everything is roll call.
Okay. All right, Orin. Joe.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Julie.[1790.42]